All right, I'd like to call to order the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for its special meeting on August 4th, 2020. And I'll call the roll. Nash?
Here.
Paragon?
Here.
Beasley Brown?
Here.
Denning? Wilkerson is here. Do we have any comments today, Mr. Mazel?
I have none, Mayor.
First item of the approval of minutes for two special meetings, one on July 20, 2020, and then again on July 28th, 2020. A motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Uh, Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next item is municipal order 2020-120. Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Rachel Dunn, Whitney Jenkins, Anna Rodriguez, and Tracy Sloan to the position of communications dispatcher in the police department. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four vacancies in the 911 dispatch center in the communications division. Human resources advertised this. We go out twice a year and recruit and go through this process. This cycle produced 108 patients. We ended up distilling that down to 13 applicants that were interviewed, including two cadets. We narrowed that down to four applicants after those 13. Interview committee consisted of Deputy Chiefs Bowles and Delaney, Amelia Bowen, Major Charles Casey, Amanda Hamilton, and Tiger Thule. And we are very excited to get Rachel Dunn, Whitney Jenkins, Anna Rodriguez, and Tracy Sloan coming into the dispatch center as new dispatchers and be glad to answer any questions you all might have. Everything should be in your packets.
Joe?
Uh, Jeff, how long will the dispatches go through training until they're released?
It takes about 12 weeks until they're released, and then they're still assisted just slightly. But usually their training consists of a 12-week program.
All in-house?
Uh, some in-house, some at the academy in Richmond.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order 2020-121. Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds in the amount of $27,620. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
We would like your all's permission to accept this $27,620, which we would split equally with the county at 13, 810. There is no local match required with this money. We've gotten the JAG money for a long time, it seems now. Bowling Green Police Department plan to use this money toward the purchase of three digital in-car cameras for police cruisers. And then we'll remit the other half, 13, 810, over to the county for their use. Be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-122. Municipal order approving the year 17 annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan amendments for community development block grant fund, grant coronavirus funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
As you all will remember, several meetings ago, we came to you with this money, this $385,0021 of extras CDBG coronavirus money from the CARES Act. We went out for applications and received 10 applications. Brent Childers and Nick Cook oversaw this process. There was a public hearing on it and opportunity for agencies to request money. In the end, we are recommending of the $385,0021, recommending $60,000 go to the welfare center to help with rent and utility assistance payments. We think this will help around 250 households. We had another group that came together, which I was really impressed with. Brass Habitat for Humanity, Popehouse Hotel Inc., Refuge, Refugee, Bowling Green, and Salvation Army all collaborated to form a Together BG group and submitted for $333,062. We are recommending giving that group that amount, and this will go through, go towards three months of targeted rent, utility, and mortgage assistance, case management, interpretation services, food and cleaning services and supplies. And we think this will help roughly 412 households in the area. Um, as you can see, the numbers don't exactly jive. We had, we're giving away 393, and we got 385, but we're pulling the difference from the admin funding from CDBG under Brent's budget. And um, this is part of the year 17 annual plan that we had to adopt and amend. And so a public hearing was held back on July 23rd that discussed all this. We had the public comment period from July to July 24th, and here we are today recommending the direction of the $60,000 and the $333,000. And I'll try to answer your questions if you have any.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Uh, Wilkerson is yes. The next item is municipal order 2020-123. Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a 2020 grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 system uninterrupted power supply replacement in the amount of $103,106.71. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
We are requesting your permission to accept this grant from the 911 Services Board. This was for a kind of a collaboration between police and IT. We're going to use these funds to replace the UPS, what we call the uninterrupted power supply. This is the thing that kicks on when power goes out just for a few seconds until the generator can kick in to save all of our servers from crashing. And so we were fortunate enough to get this money, 103, 106, to put toward that project, which will save the general fund money as well as the 911 funds. And ask for your approval to accept this money to go toward this project. Our current UPS down there at 911 Kentucky Street is about 15 years old, and it's getting harder and harder to find parts when we have issues with it. So we decided it was time to get this done, and fortunately, we got grant money to help us out with it. Try to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any comments or questions? Dana?
Thank you, Mayor. So were, was this originally budgeted with general fund and 911 dollars or just the special fund?
Um, I think we budgeted this one, didn't we, Katie? In the?
It was budgeted. Yes.
Go ahead.
It was budgeted with the 911 funds that we have, which are special revenues. We did a 30% out of one fund and 70% out of another, so we have two sources of funding for a communication center. So this grant will relieve the use of our special revenue. Okay, so no general fund? No general.
Yeah, I was mistaken on that. I apologize.
No worries. Thank you so much.
General fund does take up any over or shortfall that 911 funds incur towards the end of the year, every year, so.
Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? I didn't get you, Joe.
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order 2020-123. Municipal order, I'm sorry, 124. Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a 2020 grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board for the 911 system dispatch console workstation replacements in the amount of $112,336.25. Mr. Mazel.
Just another similar grant that police and IT collaborated with. Nick and Amelia worked on this one. This 112, 336 would go toward purchasing, replacing seven dispatch console workstations down at Kentucky Street Headquarters. And over the years, we had added two more, so we're going to, we're going to replace nine total. These things are, at least the first seven are approximately 17 years old, so they've seen some life. And there's been a reconfiguration over the years of that room, and we are in the process of replacing the flooring, so this is all going to kind of happen at the same time. Fortunately, again, we got this grant money to go towards these consoles and to help cover the cost. So be glad to answer questions on this one as well.
Are there any questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-125. Municipal order authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission for year 17, community development block grant program funding in the amount of $35,000. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
This $35,000 is a carve-out of year 17 CDBG funding. We got approval on this of the action plan on July 21st. You all approved the change or the amendment to 17. And so as with last year and other years, we are going out and recommending that Human Rights Commission handle the Fair Housing Education Outreach Program for the $35,000. They'll conduct workshops, public events, provide information to the community on fair housing laws and issues relating to discrimination, that sort of thing, and resolve any discrimination complaints through mediation, education, counseling. They do a good job with this program and serve roughly 2,000 people, I believe. And we're recommending this agreement with the Human Rights Commission once again for $35,000 for this service to the city.
Are there any comments or questions? Joe?
Uh, Jeff, what did they get last year?
It's the same amount. Katie, is that right?
It's $34,000 last year, so it's $35,000 this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is municipal order 2020-126. Municipal order approving fiscal year 2021 parks and recreation fees. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
On the occasion that we need to change fees at our parks in rec programs, we come to you with, for approval on those. This year, our only proposed change is to the golf course fees. In your packets, you should have a schedule of the current rates for golf, the daily rates mostly, and the adjustment once you, we are applying the sales tax as was mandated by House Bill 351 that took effect August 1st. And so instead of dealing with pennies and nickels and change, Brent Belcher is recommending that we just adjust the overall price and include enough to cover the sales tax amount, the remittance of sales tax. And so in most cases, as you'll see through this chart, you're only talking about a dollar or two difference on most of these daily charges. When you get into the outings and the memberships, it's a little bit more of a difference. But you'll have, you have all these in front of you, and most of them are just a dollar or two difference just to cover the sales tax. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have on this.
Any comments or questions? I'll call the roll. I'm sorry, Dana.
Uh, yeah, I was just checking to see if they had talked to any of our, I guess, more active golfers who use our facilities often, if we had gotten any feedback from them on these changes.
Um, we have not, but we felt it was kind of a mandate unless we, unless we wanted to kind of take a cut to keep the city whole. We needed to up our rates to cover what we'd be paying in for sales tax. So this took effect August 1st automatically, but we wanted to come to you with these rates and just to show that there is a slight difference now to cover the sales tax. I don't know that we have asked anybody, but it took effect Saturday and have not heard of any complaints. So.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Municipal order 2020-127. Municipal order accepting and ratifying actions of city officials in executing a CARES Act Airport Grant Agreement among the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board, the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. Mr. Mazel.
Since our last commission meeting, we were approached by the airport. They received notice that they were eligible for some CARES Act money in the amount of $159,625 to go toward the design of their rehabilitation of their terminal apron. And so they needed signatures from the city and the county and to get this done in time. And so this is a ratification to the fact that we, that they are going to receive this grant, and the city and county were not obligated to any match funding. It was 100% covered by the federal government FAA due to COVID. And so it was just kind of a sign-off. We wanted to bring this to you just for information purposes and show you the agreement. And I'll try to answer any questions. I think Gene and Hillary worked on this as well or looked over it, so.
Any comments or questions? Slim?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, my question is that this, this money that the airport went after, the airport went after, and it was eligible only to airports. It's not CARES Act money that the city went after and we could be using for other purposes, correct?
That's correct. It's CARES Act money that FAA received, but they're doling out to the airport.
Thank you so much.
Good question.
Any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. Next is first reading of ordinance BG 2020-21. Ordinance resoning real estate. Ordinance resoning a portion of a tract of land containing 4.68 acres from heavy industrial to highway business located at 5557 Nashville Road, presently owned by the Bowling Green Area Economic Development Authority Incorporated. Care of Ron Borch. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. This is a recommendation or unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for our economic development group. Are there any comments or questions from the packet that was presented? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes, Your Honor, do we already have something planned for this particular acreage? Can you say?
I haven't been informed of anything other than a, a project name which doesn't identify anyone there.
Okay.
And your, and your vote is?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. We'll have a second and final reading at the next meeting. Next is first reading of ordinance BG 2020-22, excuse me, 2020 number 22. Ordinance resoning real estate. Ordinance resoning tracts of land containing point four or five acres from two-family residential RM2 to RM3 townhouse multifamily residential located at Zero Kenton Street, presently owned by Trident Properties, the Bowling Green LLC. Care of Mitch Wright. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. This is also unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for that corner. Are there any comments or questions regarding the packet that we proceed? Yes, sir.
Mayor, will there be townhomes that are going on there? I know that's what it's being zoned to. I didn't see anything, but I may have overlooked it in the, in the zoning packet.
Have you driven past the site? There's?
A half?
Yeah, the, my understanding is that there'll be two level, but that obviously may change, but.
Right, but that's what the plan is now, similar to what's already behind it, I think.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson is yes. Next is second reading of ordinance BG 2020-19. Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance rescinding Chapter 21 Public Infrastructure Rights Away and Stormwater, Stormwaters, Subchapter 21-4, cuts, excavations, and work within right-of-way, and adopting and amended subchapter. Motion by Wilkerson, and second by Paragon. This is the second and final reading. Does anybody have any further questions with regard to the information presented last time? I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
And Wilkerson is yes. That's the final and conclusive reading for that ordinance. Next is the second reading of ordinance number BG 2020 number 20. Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number five to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2020. Motion by Wilkerson, second by Paragon. This is second final reading for what Jeff has described the last of the last budget amendments for last year. Are there any other comments or questions?
Katie is laughing like she's not sure or something.
Slim, did you have a question?
I actually thought it was the last of the last of the last. I thought there were three in there, but I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Jeff?
I said there's no turning back. We're closing the books this week, so.
All right, take your word for that. I'll call the roll. Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Denning? Wilkerson is yes. It's the second final reading, so you're clear to close last year's books. The last item we have on the agenda is our first public comment since we went online and invite our inimitable Stan England to unmute himself and provide us with the information that you already sent to us, but we'll give you time to address the public with what you've done for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I want you to know that I appreciate all the staff that you and the commissioners have around you to support what you do. You have a packet in front of you, I hope. I'll just say that Mitch Walker and I were together on this project. I'm at his desk now. I may be the chief of police at Westminster University tomorrow. But since Chief Walker was our point of contact and all the news media things were done here in his office, and we didn't solicit law enforcement to get these signatures and names for a thank you to law enforcement for protecting and serving our community. Basically, that's all we were doing. And you'd be amazed at the comments I got on my cell phone, the texts I got, the emails I got. There were over 1,500 total in the two-week span. We didn't want to prolong it. And it was just wonderful, the comments that I got. There are a number of comments that were on Facebook that you would have copies of there, and Mr. Mazel, you might relay some of those to the new police chief. I think they are recruitment, retention, and motivation. Comments that could go in anywhere in a law enforcement agency, show it to a recruit, or someone's thinking bad about, well, this is a tough job, and it is a tough job, but those comments just are very heartwarming. There's three pages that I took out of a number of pages. City manager has the full content, complement of the, the number that were on Facebook. City manager has the full complement of the number that were on Facebook. They were just great. I think in doing this project, it was like any other that I've tried to do with the city. There were all volunteers involved. We had a couple people set up the Facebook for a few days. We had Mitch Walker again, and a couple other people helped us in volunteering for this. They were very small staff, no dollars spent. I always try to get copies made or whatever that we needed in those packets from somewhere, either the Legion or City Hall or whatever. But just think about this for a minute. If you were in one of these scenarios, who would you need to call? A vehicle accident, an abducted lost child, domestic violence problem, your son and daughter at Western Kentucky University needs immediate help, need protection from criminals, your business was robbed, you need help to get drug dealers out of your neighborhood and out of our city, the church has an intruder. What if your school has an intruder? And something worse, what if you hear shots fired? You have an assault, kidnapping, and murder. You know, I think sometimes we forget how often law enforcement officers are called to protect and serve our community. And going through this process, there were a number of wonderful people that made great comments. I think our police department is one of the best in the country. The other agencies that were counted in this were Bowling Green Police Department, Warren County Sheriff's Department, Warren County Drug Task Force, Kentucky State Police, and of course, Western Kentucky University Police Department. I would ask all you there as a group, that maybe sometime during the year, that you ask the heads of these agencies to come to your place at City Hall and thank them for what they do, and know all of them, because they're all great people.
Thank you, Stan. I appreciate it and wish I had more time to give you that we feel good about those kinds of remarks. But be sure to thank your team for all their efforts to bring to light what our community has brought to by having people like our agencies here that are serving us so well. But thank you for the effort. Thank you for the support that you give not just the City of Bowling Green as a government agency, but the City of Bowling Green as all of its people. We're so pleased that you're a part of our community and have been so active in so many, thanks for so many years. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks for the great job that all of you do, that we're lucky to have y'all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you. I'm in total agreement. Our policing agencies need all the support that we can give them and all the encouragement and prayers for their safety, frankly. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That was the last item on our agenda. Our next scheduled meeting is August 18th, 2020. Did you have any other? I'm sorry, I remember an email. Jeff, did you have some special meeting you were thinking of?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, then August 18th, 2020. Thank you for tuning in. Thanks again, Stan. We appreciate it.